Welcome to the Wednesday, December 10, 2014, meeting of Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. The first item on our agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from November 12th. Deb moves to approve.
I will second that.
Thank you, Jim. Any corrections or other thoughts that folks had on the minutes? All right, we have our motion and second. All in favor of approving the minutes of November 12th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Nels and Kurt.
And Rebecca.
And Rebecca, thank you. All right, next up, correspondence.
None from staff.
None from staff, all right. I'm going to acknowledge the correspondence sitting at our places here, which seems to be from staff. Seasonal greetings, and I guess as part of that, they couldn't fit these in the envelope, so they're all in one bag.
Nice.
So we'll figure out a way to pass these down the row.
Nels, the cards are from us, the cookies are from the mayor.
The cards are from us and the cookies from Sisters Cookie Company here in town are from the mayor. Looks like they come in at least two flavors, so just send them that way and then we'll send them the other way and Jim will be the last guy to get a choice.
Yeah, I was thinking I'll take one coming and going.
Come and go, twice. All right. The other thing I have in correspondence is we got an email note, I believe from Bill Beldap, about a week ago regarding service to commission. And I just wanted to remind you of that. This is a mechanism that the city uses to recognize the service of individuals to their commissions. And I'm looking at Mike, I think the deadline to turn in letters of nomination is tomorrow. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if I understand, the mechanism is if you wish to nominate somebody, you can inform me or Mike and between us, we'll cook up a letter. Hopefully you'll give us some reasoning as you nominate. And that letter goes on to the mayor?
Mayor.
So if you are inclined, and maybe you can look back in your inbox, you'll see there was a little bit of criteria that was attached to that. All right, any other correspondence, looking up and down the row? Okay. Transportation Commission meeting report.
They haven't met, they meet tomorrow.
They will meet tomorrow, okay? All right, moving right along. Open microphone. This is a time in our agenda when members of the public may speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on our agenda or currently pending before Planning and Zoning Commission. Please come up to our microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any takers? All right. So next up is public hearing on alternate front yard setback amendment. And as a reminder to our audience, the public hearing has a sort of formal structure. Mike will introduce the topic. I will open the hearing, then for public comment in three sections, in favor, opposed, and general comment, we'll close the hearing and the commissioners will deliberate and vote. So you may wish to come up and speak at some point during that open period. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. Before you tonight, we have a proposed amendment to the alternate front yard setback portion of the zoning code. And to just go through a little bit of background, we had that 2013 council goal to expand the perceived downtown area of Main Street, and that was from East Street to the South couplet. Through various means, construction of streetscape improvements, but also evaluation of zoning and development standards. We looked at residential uses in commercial zones, which was recently approved by City Council about a month ago. And what we have left is reduced setbacks in motor business zone. And so we had gone through kind of a reduction in motor business, really didn't think that was warranted, and decided instead to look at the alternate front yard setback section of the zoning code, which currently only applies to residential properties and maybe expand that into commercial, which would alleviate kind of the concern on that north Main Street area. So we discussed the possibility of amending this portion October 22nd, and then at our last meeting, we reviewed the draft amendment. And so as the portion currently reads, basically allows you, if you have an older section of town, and you're building a house on a vacant lot, maybe the setback's 25 feet, but the adjacent houses are basically sitting back 10 feet away from the property line. Essentially allows you to take the average of either of those two properties and make that your alternate front yard setback, which you're able to utilize for building your structure. So basically how it reads right now is any residential zoning district where established front yards are less than the minimum required front yard for such a zoning district, the required front yard shall be disregarded, subject to the following conditions. Any principal structure erected on the interior lot shall provide a minimum front yard at least equal to the average setback of the principal buildings on the lots of budding said front yard. It also goes on to dictate what's required as of corner lots. No principal building, no minimum setback shall be assumed to be two-thirds of the minimum required front yard for the zoning districts in this distance shall be used in computing the said average setback. And so our proposed amendment was to not restrict it to just residential zone property, strike the residential portion to include commercial as well as residential, insert the section, basically says zoning administrator may grant modifications to the front yard setback of new principal buildings on the subject property, provided that. And then go into basically two subsections, and you're able to utilize either one. And the first one is the minimum front yard setbacks at least equal to the average setback of the principal buildings located on the lots of budding said subject property. So basically retaining similar language and letting you average the two adjacent properties, but also inserting a new section, which basically allows you to take into consideration 60% or more of the principal buildings within a numbered block on the same side of the street as the subject property. If they are set back less than the required zoning front setback, the average setback of the existing non-conforming structures may be used to establish the minimum front yards of all properties, fronting on that side of the street. And so last time I provided some examples of, this is the north Main Street corridor here, and just to say that, you know, that you have a 10-foot setback within the motor business zone. So say you wanted to do an addition off the south end of this building, or this building was completely destroyed, you wanted to rebuild. Basically you have a 10-foot setback here, and you'd have to build to that 10-foot setback because you're looking at the average, and so you factor into the transmission shop to the south, even though the, basically the street wall, the majority of the buildings are right up to the street frontage there, you'd still be limited to the average of those two, but it wouldn't really gain you anything because you'd still have the 10-foot setback. If we applied the 60% provision, you know, you look at the 60% of the buildings on that block, right up to the street wall, basically. And so utilizing that, you'd basically be able to build right up to the property line to simulate the rest of the properties that are constructed on that block. Provided a residential example, basically you'd be in the same boat as the property. Outlight in red, you know, if you were, say you had a 15-foot front yard setback, you know, look at the basic setback, all these properties on this block, except for this one rogue property that, you know, ends up being 30, 40 feet back from the street, from the back edge of the sidewalk. And so utilizing the 60% provision, basically you'd be allowed to duplicate the rest of the houses that are constructed on the block and use that same setback as what those are, instead of having to average this property as well as this property and set it back somewhere between, you know, probably 15, 20 feet off of that back edge of the sidewalk. And so really, that's the intent of the second provision of the alternate front yard setback. So my recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing, and upon consideration of any public testimony presented, I recommend approval of the proposed ordinance to City Council, and I'd certainly try to answer any questions that you might have.
Kurt? Yeah, what's, can you give us a brief version of what the purpose of the front setback is? I mean, why is it even?
Basically, it just allows you, you know, in circumstances that usually we have older neighborhoods that have 80-foot rightaways. And so back when those were originally platted, maybe they didn't have, you know, our first zoning ordinance was in the late 40s. And so all those properties that were built up to that point, they probably didn't have setbacks. They would just start building where the front property line was, you know, similar to a lot of these right here. Well, as subsequent zoning codes have been adopted, all of a sudden you have setback requirements that may not, you know, that encompass a lot of these older areas but are applied in new areas as well that work well. Well, in older areas, maybe it doesn't work so well because you can't just apply a standard 20-foot front yard setback and get the same kind of development pattern of a street in that neighborhood. And so that's kind of the intent, is just to be able to do the average of the two adjacent. So, you know, let's just look in the middle of the block, say this house burns down. When you replace the structure, you're required to meet current setback requirements. And so let's say it's a 20-foot front yard setback in this zone, regardless of these other two lots that are right up against the street, you would have to set that structure back 20 feet. The alternate front yard setback requirement just allows you to take the average of the two adjacent properties, and that basically becomes your alternate front yard setback. So you're able to utilize the 20 feet, or you're able to utilize the average of the two. And so.
But my question is more along the lines of, well, what's the purpose of the setback?
It's more philosophical, I think.
I mean, is it aesthetics, is it, is there some?
Setback's usually intended to preserve open space, you know, view sheds. You certainly don't want, you know, maybe in this circumstance, you're looking out your front door and you can't see up or down the street because somebody's either built a fence, you know, six-foot fence all the way out to the sidewalk on both sides, or maybe you have a narrower lot and, you know, your structure's built in the middle of the lot, and then both of the lots on either side, maybe their structures are built all the way out to the street, you know, you kind of have this stockade effect. And so it's to prevent that, you know, open space, view sheds, and basically just the community or neighborhood character, to preserve that.
Michael, would you say this ordinance is mostly derived from interest in our commercial streets, though, than the residential, or do you think it was both?
Well, we had looked at it mainly for commercial, you know, amending the, just, instead of just requiring residential or having residential properties able to utilize that, we wanted to have commercial properties. But we also looked at it, and one of the common occurrences that we run into is, you know, just like this one, kind of the rogue properties. And so what we've always wanted to do is utilize, well, we'll skip that property and use the other one on the other side or something, but we can't do that. And so, you know, this 60% provision allows us to do that, and so it's kind of twofold. You know, we included commercial, or proposing to include commercial in it, and we looked at maybe one of the issues that we've ran into over the years in dealing with the alternate front yard setback for residential, and that's one of them, so.
So Kurt, in my mind, at least, if I could try to answer, in commercial areas, what we're really trying to do is get a uniformity of our urban space, so that the extension of Main Street seems more like it is downtown than it's, than willy-nilly. If you go along most motor business streets all over America, they're just stuff sitting everywhere, and it's really pretty messy. And we know that our downtown seems rather codified, and I think that's one of the main reasons, looking at that extension of Main Street.
Well, I would say, from a residential standpoint, that you're also trying to preserve, maybe, especially in historic neighborhoods, the pattern that pre-existed the code. And for example, I was an architect for a porch on somebody's house that the porch had been removed, and so under the actual setback requirement, it would have had, they wouldn't have been able to build the porch back, but the averaging rule enabled us to look at the adjacent houses and say, hey, this is holding where, you know, where it should be. And so it gives more flexibility in preserving neighborhood patterns in residential as well.
Other questions for Mike? Okay, thank you, Mike. So with that, I'll open the public hearing and accept testimony in favor of recommending this revision to the council. Testimony in opposition? Testimony of a general nature. Okay. Well then, I will close the public hearing, and council, or the commission can discuss amongst itself what it would like to do with the proposed ordinance revision.
That's great to me.
That almost sounded like a motion, but I'll listen a little longer.
I move to recommend that staff proceed with.
Recommend this revision to council.
Revision to council, I'm sorry, yeah.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to recommend to council this revision to the ordinance, alternate front yard setback? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I see none. So with that, we have adopted or recommended the adoption of this amendment. Mike, next up is a review of the ADU survey data.
So we have long-awaited results of our survey we sent out in October. Before we get to those, wanted to go through where we've been up to this point. Basically, it was introduced to Moscow citizens in 2012, when we included basically two questions within the citizen survey. Those two questions received fairly strong support for ADUs. We also researched other ADU ordinances within cities in the Northwest, and then on January 22nd, 2014, we conducted our first open house. And also included within that open house was a survey that participants took at the end. It was also put online for about three to four weeks after the open house, through a Survey Monkey. We received 28 respondents, or 28 surveys were received from respondents. And then on April 2nd, 2014, the commission conducted our second open house. We also included a survey at that open house, and then that same survey was available online for about a month after. We experienced some biased results that compromised that survey, and so we basically had to disregard the data that we had received. We had been flooded with one particular type of opinion on that, and so we had to disregard those. And then October of this year, we had kind of put down the project for the summer, picked it back up in the fall, and then in October, we decided to send out a direct mailing survey to a random sample of residents. We ended up sending it out to 342 people, originally shooting for 300, but I had taken a geocoded sample of 400, and once you filter out the residents that are outside of the city and those addresses, you end up with a number, and so we just decided to leave it at 342. We had a 23% response rate that came back, and that included 78 completed surveys. We had nine surveys out of the 342 that were undeliverable. And so we had included basically the same two questions as part of the 2012 citizen survey, as well as the January open house survey. We had questions that can, or the survey contained questions basically about allowing ADUs, usage of ADUs if permitted, standards for ADUs, as well as some ownership information. We compiled the results, we have the aggregate of basically all the surveys, we've also coded it, so we have results basically from people that lived in the R1 and R2 zones, as well as people that lived in the R3 and R4, so we could distinguish between the two areas. So let's first take a look at the aggregate response data. First, we wanted to get an idea of basically who these people are that are responding. So we had some kind of demographic questions that really told us about that, and so one of the ones we asked was which best describes the building that you live in. So the majority of them ended up being single-family dwellings. You know, we have 67%, one family attached or one or more houses, like a duplex or town house, had 7% of those. Apartment buildings, 21%, and then mobile homes, 5%. So the majority of the respondents lived in single-family dwellings, which is good.
And Michael, that doesn't have anything to do with ownership, does it? It's just single-family home, we don't care who owns it.
Well, we get to the next question here, we asked, do you own or rent your home?
Oh, yeah.
And so, you know, it appears that the majority of them own, so 71%, and then 29% rent.
Yeah.
And so you correlate that to the, you know, previous chart there, pie chart, and, you know, the majority of the single-family dwellings are occupied by owners, so, which is good. Looked at category by age, really just across all boards, you know, it's pretty even-handed as far as the number of respondents in the age categories there.
Wow, 75 are old, 13%.
Then we asked the question, if you were to add an ADU to your property, who would it be for? And so it looks like, you know, the majority, rental income encompasses 37%. Elderly family member is 25%. Yourself, maybe you're living in the ADU and you rent out your house. Other, we had some just blank responses. If you were to select other, there's a space right next to it, we wanted you to write what the other was. A lot of people left it blank, nine people did. Three others went add an ADU. One would be an adult child, one would be an adult child in school, grandchild, guest house. And so, pretty, you know, even, I mean, even though the majority is rental income, you still have elderly family member that encompasses a quarter, as well as disabled family number represents a little bit there.
Mike, would you, I just wanted to step back a second on the sendout. Do you pick that by, like, on every fifth name or something? How did that, how did that 340 come up?
Basically, we have a list every two years for the citizen survey. And so Jen selects, you know, purchases, basically a mailing list, and then we generate a random sample out of that list. So basically, we had taken that same sample that we've got, that Jen had received, and cycled out 300 out of those. And so that's basically all the residential addresses in Moscow. Citizen survey pulls 1,200 out for theirs, and we just pulled 342 out for ours.
And I was just trying, did that just, 300 come out of hat, or did you think 15%? Or was there some percentage guideline of how many people you should have?
I think the commission decided that was about the.
Think we decided? Ooh.
Yeah, we at least framed the parameters.
Alzheimer's is setting in.
I think it was last summer.
Last summer. And the, we were trying to balance between a fairly robust result and not expending as much money as the citizen survey.
Right, right.
So we went to a much smaller, you know, a quarter of what they send out for the citizen survey.
Thank you for reminding me. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
So now we're looking at the residing zone of survey respondents. And so, pretty equal for R1, R2, R3, and R4. Had about the same R2, R4, the same R1 and R3, so pretty equal. We had small amounts of motor business, you know, I think there's a couple apartments above Anytime Fitness, that's why you see the motor business, maybe there's a PUD, and that's why you have residential in that zone. U-zone, suburban residential and residential office include a small percentage of that. Looking at.
Oh, I was just going to say, it seems interesting to me that we have that kind of, when we saw that 71% were homeowners, to have, I guess there, people are owning homes in the R4s and R3 areas and.
Sure. Yeah, Fort Russell, portions of Fort Russell, houses, you know, properties close to the downtown core are almost always zoned R4, and so we'd include a lot of those, as well as, you know, apartment buildings and everything. Moving on to the next question, I would support allowing ADUs in my neighborhood, and this is just the aggregate, and so pretty overwhelming support as far as agreeing. 63% when you combine the strongly agree and agree. Neutrals, fairly high, 16%, but disagree. You have 10% as well as eight, so only 18% of those people surveyed disagree. If ADUs were permitted in my neighborhood, I would be interested in adding an ADU to my property. So majority of people are neutral, you know, maybe at some point in the future, they may look at adding an ADU to their property, but right now, no. Large percentage disagree, though, you know, so it's pointing to, you know, maybe we would, we should have ADUs throughout the city, but if there are, I'm probably not going to utilize it right now, or it may in the future, so. I would support ADUs as a permitted use in all residential zones. And so you're looking at about 53% total agree, between strongly agree and just agree. This could account for people in R1, R2 that may be wanted as a conditional use permit, and so that's why you've seen it go down. You see a high neutral on this one as well, and that could mean that same thing. Maybe it's, they don't want it suburban residential, Ag, Forest, some of those other zones, or they just want it as a conditional use permit in R1, R2, and maybe they don't care about R3, R4, it could be a permitted use. So it's maybe what that one says. And moving on, I would support ADUs as a conditionally permitted use in all residential zones. So you look a little bit less, so total agree, 48%, disagrees, 26%, then you really have a high neutral here, and so, you know, you're encompassing a lot of the R3, R4, who believe that it should be allowed by right. And a lot of people, you know, across all zones, believe that it should just be allowed by right in R3 and R4, maybe a conditional use in R1, R2, that's why you see the agree go down. And we move on, I would support ADUs as a permitted accessory use in R3 and R4 zones. Pretty much across the board, everybody agrees that you should have ADUs in R3 and R4. So 76% agree, only 8% disagree, you have about 12% that are neutral here. So pretty much overwhelming support for R3 and R4 as permitted.
Kurt, did you have a question?
Yeah, is there a difference between permitted accessory use and just permitted use?
No. If it says just permitted use, it means permitted accessory use.
Yeah, okay.
And then, moving on, says I would support ADUs as a permitted accessory use in moderate R2, R1. Pretty much, you know, 62% would agree, and that would include respondents from R3 and R4, who think it should be allowed there as well. You're looking at a pretty small disagreement, 21%, and the neutral is 16%. I guess I could clarify the permitted use or permitted accessory use. Sometimes it, within these, I've noticed that it doesn't have accessory in it. There is a difference, but it should say accessory within all these questions, is what I mean, so, sorry. but it should say accessory within all these questions, is what I mean, so, sorry. And then we looked at kind of these design standards, or these elements of the design, and rated those for everybody, and so, also rated them based upon extremely, or very important, extremely important, neutral, don't know, very important, or somewhat important. We also converted it to the 100-point scale, which basically assigns numerical values, .25, .5, depending upon what you have there, extremely or very important, those are all assigned. The four-point scale excludes the neutral, and so, we obviously exclude don't know as well. And so, when you look at the 100-point scale, you can notice that maybe design and location of entrances are a little bit lower than the rest, and maybe not as important to everybody that was surveyed. Owner occupancy, off-street parking, maximum occupancy, and maximum size were all things that were pretty important to a lot of people. So, those were the results of that. And then when we broke it down, when we had them coded, and we broke it down between R1 and R2 respondents, looking at what they had indicated, when asked the question, "I would support allowing ADUs in my neighborhood," they basically, 60 percent agree, only 25 percent disagreed in the total of that. Then asked, "If ADUs were permitted in my neighborhood, I would be interested in adding an ADU to my property," you know, pretty similar to what the other respondents said, not just R1, R2, is that they're probably not going to add one anytime in the near future, a lot, you know, you have a high neutral, which means that maybe in the future, they might look at adding one if a situation changes, but really a high disagree here, 52 percent, and only about 12 percent indicated that they may add an ADU. Looking at whether they would support ADUs as permitted use in all residential zones, you only have a 37 percent agree, disagree is 40 percent, so, you know, I guess what you could go back to is their neighborhood, so maybe they don't know what zone they're necessarily in. If everybody in R1, R2 is saying that 60 percent of them, that they would strongly agree that they would like them in their neighborhood, and then you flip to this one that would say it, "I would support it as a permitted use in all residential zones," and it goes down that drastically, you know, maybe that's an indication they don't know where they're at, maybe it's an indication that they like it as a conditional use permit, which is, you know, a high likelihood, or maybe all the rest of the residential zones, like suburban residential, Ag, Forest, maybe those are zones where they don't want to see ADUs. And so, those are all probably indications that staff thought of on these questions. And we move on to, "I would support ADUs as a conditionally permitted use in all residential zones." It bumps up, you know, you have 54 percent agreeing, or strongly agreeing in this category, and then you have 26 percent that disagree. I think they would recognize that there's some zones like R3, R4, that you'd want it just as an allowed use, and that's why you don't see it maybe as high as, you know, other areas, like, "I would support allowing ADUs in my neighborhood." And moving on, "I would support ADUs as a permitted accessory use in R3 and R4 zones." I think everybody in R1, R2 agrees that it should be allowed as just a permitted use, accessory use within R3, R4. You've got 74 percent that agree with that, only 6 percent that disagree, maybe 14 percent, you know, are unfamiliar with what that means. Then we move on, "I would support ADUs as a permitted accessory use in moderate R2 and R1." Basically, 52 percent agree with that, 26 percent disagree, a few that don't know. So, you know, not as high, but, you know, this tends to lead, you believe that it's maybe a conditional use permit is what everybody in R1, R2 would be leaning towards. Looking at those design elements again, it's about the same as what we had reviewed for the aggregate, designs a little bit up in this category, locations of entrances, I think everybody could agree that that's not incredibly important, owner occupancy, off-street parking, maximum occupancy, and maximum size are all things that are pretty important.
Well, in that one, off-street parking is low, I noticed when I was going through it, that a lot of times off-street parking didn't seem to be an issue even as much as design. So, it was really the, you know, impact of the number of occupants and the maximum size being the two biggest consistently, and owner occupancy, too, yeah.
Yeah, the location entrances, and then the off-street parking design were kind of neck and neck the whole time, you know. I think that could be a result, I think when we get to R3, R4, the agrees end up going down quite a bit. As far as the off-street parking, I think they probably go, or are increased in that category mainly just because, you know, maybe the, in R3, R4, maybe it's more of an issue with on-street parking getting taken, and they like that off-street parking space, R1, R2, you know, maybe it's not that big of a deal because there's streets open and they can park in front. So that brings us to the R3 and R4 response data. "I would support allowing ADUs in my neighborhood," pretty overwhelming, 68 percent agree, 9 percent disagree. "If ADUs were permitted in my neighborhood, I would be interested in adding ADU to my property." Pretty much what we've seen in other areas, you know, kind of a large disagree. The agree has moved up from the R1 and R2, but still pretty low, as well as a high neutral for this. "I would support ADUs as a permitted use in all residential zones," 66 percent agree, and 15 percent disagree. You have some people that are just neutral and may not, may not care. "I would support ADUs as a conditionally permitted use in all residential zoning districts." Goes pretty much down there, agree totals, 39 percent, disagrees, 27 percent, and so obviously, neutral, you know, maybe they don't really care in other areas, but I think it points to that they'd like, basically as a permitted use instead of a CUP in R3 and "I would support ADUs as a permitted accessory use in R3, R4," pretty much overwhelming support for R3 and R4, 81 percent support, only 6 percent disagree with that statement. And moving on, "I would support ADUs as a permitted accessory use in R2 and R1," you know, if you're on R3 and R4, I guess it doesn't really matter, and we have a high, you know, agreeance rate with there as well, 75 percent, disagrees only 12 percent, but it does drop a little bit from R3, R4. Then we looked at those important elements, design elements for ADUs. As you can see, the extremely or very important aspects of those had dropped pretty significantly from R1, R2. Looks like maximum occupancy is still an important thing. You have some off-street parking, still around 62, one of the more important things within this R3, R4 area, and then you have a couple that are tied, owner occupancy and maximum size. Design, location of entrances, probably scored the lowest here, that only scored 28 on the five-point scale, so, kind of gives you an idea of the different areas of town and what they would like. Then we just thought we would compare across the board, the 2012 citizen survey, January open house data, as well as this current mailing in October, and as you can tell, it, I mean, it's, it's pretty similar. Look at the 2012 citizen survey, 63 percent agree, 17 percent disagree. You look at the October mailing that we just sent out, 63 percent agree, 18 percent disagree. So, you know, if you look at kind of statistically valid data, this is pretty consistent with the citizen survey, which, you know, we send 1,200 of those out, as well as kind of the results of the January open house, even though we only had 29 surveys that were turned in during that time. But, similar, you know, a little bit higher in agreeance, 68 percent for the January open house, disagreement was up a little bit as well, and so, less people chose to remain neutral at the open house, or we didn't ask them that question. So I think we, looking at the results, there are some presumptions you can make from that data. The first is that maybe a conditional use permit allows C- ADUs within R1 and R2, maybe they're permitted by right in R3 and R4, and then some of the important elements were size. The last time we talked, we were looking at 600 square feet, or 40 percent of square floor area, whichever's less. Looking at maximum occupancy, we're going to limit that to two occupants. Owner occupancy was basically, we're going to require owner occupancy.
Mike, clarification, owner occupancy on the site, not owner in the ADU.
Correct, correct. Well, either one, so they could, yeah, I mean, they could shift around, but as long as they're on-site, yeah.
How do you monitor that? That's what I don't, I've never understood.
Well, you would record that against the property.
You'd do what?
It'd be recorded against the deed of the property.
Oh, I see.
It'd be a requirement, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And then off-street parking, one space per ADU. You know, we had put that in there, but from the results, you know, you could maybe add design, maybe take away off-street parking, you know, that's something I think the commission needs to decide what direction they want to go there. And then, staff could certainly, based upon your direction tonight, draft an ordinance for your review at our meeting in January, the first one, the 14th of 2015, so.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike, or discussions about what we would like to direct staff to consider and prepare?
So, I found it kind of interesting that the desire for off-street parking actually, you know, went down when you went to R1 and R2, so it seems like it's a really good idea to have it in R3 and R4. If you did do a conditional use permit approach in R1 and R2, could you just separately assess whether or not an ADU in R1 and R2 needs a, an extra parking lot, parking space? Or would it be easier just to blanket in there that all ADUs need a parking spot?
It would be easier if we just blanketed that in there and had one regulations across all, you know, zones, R1 through R4, and just did a conditional use permit. Kind of the issue you run into, but you could also do it that way. The issue with a conditional use permit is one of the criteria that you're required to justify or satisfy, deals with basically design requirements, so it's meeting all design standards of the zoning code. And so, you know, if you're not, there's really no flexibility, if we require one, and the board of adjustment doesn't have the ability to just issue a blanket variance to waive that spot. You know, you could have some type of language that gives them a little bit of discretion about that, but I would just suggest having one standard, and then they could just review that as they do a conditional use permit.
Did you think that the numbers, I was surprised at the support in R1 and R2 for accessory dwellings without a conditional use permit, and maybe I'm just not reading the data right, but I was wondering, I, you know, before we did this last survey, I would have thought for sure it would make sense to have a conditional use permit there, but it seemed like there was, let's see, which ones are we looking at? Because, I mean, when you have, you have 60 percent of the people agreeing, right? From, and that's the R, and that's pretty high.
I know that view, alright.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, so it's closer there, that's what you're going, okay.
Yeah, you ask them permitted use in all residential zones, and it drops drastically, it's 37 percent.
And it's hard, it's hard to know what they were thinking about that question.
Yeah, but then you look at, "I would support ADUs as a conditionally permitted use in all residential zones," so we're on the same page, you know, we're talking about all residential zones, and then it jumps up to 54 percent.
Yeah, okay.
So that's kind of a substantial jump, and indicates that, you know, they would wish to have a CUP.
Because that other chart, pie chart that you just showed a second ago, had them at 60, whatever it was, it was quite, yeah, 60 to 25, and that, and so, the data's kind of inconsistent to me, I can't really figure out what people are really thinking in their responses.
Yeah.
So, right, so Mike, if we look at this and then go, I think it's ahead two slides, where the question was ADU in R3, R4, and ADU in R1, R2, and I think it's ahead two slides from here, there. Yeah. So, yeah, there's, there's something to puzzle out about what, in my neighborhood, regardless of what my neighborhood is, I'm reasonably okay with it. Then when I start naming neighborhoods by type, I have different perspectives on that. And then the question with the conditional use permit, it isn't clear to me if that's the negative coming out, or negative to the idea of conditional use permits.
Of having to go through the process.
Over and right there, yeah.
Right. And so I read that one as the muddiest, the responses on conditional use, because I think people don't completely understand, some people, it's hard to interpret the data whether they just don't want to hassle, want people to have to hassle with that process, and don't want to be bothered with it, or whether they really think it's, you know, a good thing or a bad thing, you know, it's, I couldn't read much out of that, you know.
It's a very odd thing, this, like, the data kind of shows, this is my first experience with, "No, no, it's okay in my backyard."
Yeah, right, 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 the NIMBY is gone, it's not NIMBYism, yeah.
Mike, have you talked about the responses, whether people have a garage built into their house, or whether their garage is separate, really changes the nature of the way you think about your property, and it, and sometimes I feel like many of the R1 would probably be a little bit more modern residential areas where garages are probably built in, and while I'm not sure that people are upset about an ADU, they, I mean, it doesn't make a lot, nearly as much sense, it just doesn't seem to relate to them, unless you've got big, big, you know, if you have 12,000 square foot lots, then you could build an independent building. I just, that's an issue that keeps rolling around in my head that I can't quite get over, because as we spend time in the historic district, or, which is mostly R2 and R3 things, we have a lot of garages that are separate, which makes a potential ADU a little bit more sensible than building a brand-new, you know, a brand-new building, and I just have a hard time deciding what, it was hard in the questions, I felt like the questions were pretty good, so I feel pretty good about them, but I'm just not sure how people who their garage, you know, when you have your car in your living room, you don't, it's a different world than when you have it out there someplace. I just don't know how those people respond, whether they're really, just don't care, or whether it never even occurs to them about a...
Well, you're saying that they're used to ha, I mean, in... Well, you're saying that they're used to ha, I mean, in detached garages, they're already, people are already used to having a building other than their house on the lot, and then all of a sudden, when they're attached, they're not used to that pattern. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, and I think, I think that also, that discussion also, just, it just muddies how you think about it, is in an area where we have more ADUs already, or where, you know, let's see, where, certainly where I live, I'm used to seeing cars parked out on the street all the time, and so I think differently about it. People in an R1 division, subdivision, it doesn't occur to them that there's a parking issue, you know, but for those of us who live either close to apartments or in interior places, I've just noticed that people who come to visit us will look out on our street and say, gee, how come all those cars are parked in front of your house? Well, duh, that's the way we live, in the middle of the city, it's, it's just normal that cars are parked there. So I don't know how those things play out, as you, as you thought about it, but I'm not so sure that the conditional use is, I guess what I'm getting at, is I'm not so sure the conditional use is absolutely necessary either. The balance there is, do you want more government control telling you what to do, or would you prefer to be protected so that we have to talk to staff and have to talk about this project? I'm not sure.
Could you advance to your last slide, and then, just so we can see your list of recommendations again? Rebecca, I think you had a comment.
Well, I was just, I mean, is, is what we're trying to achieve here is more density in undense places, or more density in dense places? Because it seems like the folks that are R3 and R4, they want, you know, it's fine with them, they already have density. So are you going to add ADUs, you know, where there are apartment buildings? Or, you know what I'm saying? But the concern seems to be for the folks that are, you know, in the R1 and 2, where they really think about it, you know?
It also seems like, at least in Fort Russell, R2 and R3 are so intermingled through that whole zone, you could be a half a block from one place, and something's allowed, and a not in another, and, and so I almost wonder if the break is really at R1, and then R2 and 3 and 4 are kind of more without a conditional use.
Yeah, that's a good, I like, I like that.
Because you have bigger lots and different pattern in R1 than you do, and, but you are talking about collapsing R1 and R2 together at some point, right? Are you still having that dialogue in terms of, in the zoning code? You talked about, Bill talked, mentioned it once, that...
Yeah, we had discussed it, but we don't know how that's going to play out.
Because I see, I bet you there's a difference between R2 and R1, if you were to pick it apart even more, and, and just, you know, neighborhoods that include both, right next to each other practically, you know? That part seems kind of strange, that my neighbor a half block away would have to go get a conditional use permit, and I can do it by right, you know, sort of thing.
Yeah.
And so, that's...
Well, I live on almost an acre, and we have an extra little, we call it the cottage, it's just something we've been working on fixing up, but, you know, there we have a big lot.
Right.
And so to, you know, it almost seems like, why do we have to have permission to have that be okay, because we have the space to have it? But I don't know what I'm trying to say, but lot sizes.
I guess I would wonder if there's really a compelling case to have conditional use in any of the R1 through R4, based on the data, but I don't know how the rest of you feel.
It would seem to me that if you're, if we've decided as a group that we're going to have, we're going to allow this in the city, accessory dwelling units, that you shouldn't need a conditional use permit at all, in any zone, if we've decided this is, that we're going to support more density, that, what's the difference between zones? If you have a bigger lot, if you're on an R1 lot and you have more space, why would you need a conditional use permit, and someone on a small lot in an R3 not need one? Or to add something inside the additional, the existing structure, why would you need a conditional use permit for that? Would seem like if you've decided this is a, something that's in general good for the city, that it should be allowed anyplace.
See, even, even in the R1 and R2 data, you know, there's a majority that said, yeah, this is okay with me. I mean, it's not, not as big a majority, but...
The thing that sticks out to me in the, in the data...
I'm not necessarily going to have one, so...
Yeah. If I, if I look at the night, the 2012 survey versus the current one, that, the difference that jumps out at me is that in, in 2012, only thirteen percent strongly agreed or agreed that they would be wanting to build one, and now it's up to twenty percent. So it seems like more people are becoming interested in doing this.
Mike, a question about how the ordinance might be structured. Would, would the ADU provision be in its own section, and then each section would simply point to it? What I'm wondering is, if the commission, let's say adopts, let's say suggests, we would like you to bring us a, a proposal that reflects those statements, conditional in R1 and R2, and permitted in R3 and R4. But then actually gets down at the point, and you can hear there's some divergence of opinion. R1 only, I heard from Wendy.
Well, no, I would say get rid of conditional use.
Okay, definitely from Jim, across the board.
Yeah, yeah.
What I'm wondering is, I don't want to end up in a situation where we're rewriting a lot of it by making amendments to it, but if it was easy to, to strike the word conditional, or add the word conditional, you know, it would give the group some flex, so I just wanted to help my restructuring.
Yeah, it would be relatively easy. I mean, how we envision it is, it'd probably be the ADU and, and all the elements there would be in a section called specific use standards. Same section as we put townhouses, twin homes, you know, things of that nature, daycares. And so we'd list out, you know, what an ADU is, and then all the elements that you needed to satisfy with an ADU. And then in each specific zone, we would list it, ADU is just under either permitted use or conditional use. So it's just a matter of either striking it from conditional use and, and putting it as a permitted use, or the other way around.
Okay. So...
So would it be ridiculous to have a, hoping it says, it's according to lot size? I mean, if we want to really densify where we're not dense?
Hmm.
Does that, does that...
So, so the question, Mike, is there a different way to do it effectively? You're, an overlay would say, here's a geographic area, and we say it's okay in here regardless of zoning. You're saying, you're creating a new, new kind of rule, I think, right? Is, is that even conceivable, Mike?
Yes, I need a clarification as to...
Larger lots, it's more permissible.
Larger lots that have less stuff on them, you know, I mean, if we're, if the density...
If the question is, are we trying to densify?
Yeah, yeah. Over densify, you know, don't want to over densify dense areas, but want to fill in places that are not so, I don't know.
Yeah, it seems like that would add a whole level of complexity, yeah.
Well, the survey data didn't really address that.
Lot size.
Yeah, lot size.
There is, and the other side of that coin, it seems to me, is choices are big, important for us to have a menu of choices, of places to live in our cities, and some people, even though we may debate the issue of a big lot or R1, they may, those choices need to be there, it seems to me, for those people who are anxious for that choice. Apparently, people who live in R3, R4, you know, we're more comfortable with, that, as you said, as you observed, we're more comfortable with density, so fine, let's have a little more, not a problem, because we're not worried about it. If you, if you were in a place where there wasn't density in the first place, it just seems different to you. And so that's probably the, an argument about the R1.
It seems to me that the whole idea of this is to encourage the efficient use of infrastructure within the city. And so it doesn't really, it seems to me that doesn't really matter whether you're putting it on a big lot, or inside an existing house, or in a, in an already crowded neighborhood, you're encouraging, by allowing this in all areas, you're encouraging the efficient use of the infrastructure that we have, and that's why I would support the whole thing.
Containing sprawl.
Yeah, exactly.
So in hearing this conversation, and without pinning you down for what you may say in January, I'm getting the sense that you would prefer to make it a permitted by right in all four zones.
I would, and I'll be here in January, so I'll, I'll say that.
Victoria had a comment, too.
Okay, let me kind of, so Mike, I'm getting the sense that the group here is leaning towards no conditional use model.
Okay.
But I, my previous question, I want to have the flexibility for some...
Sure, I mean, I could draft an, a proposed ordinance, and it'd just be as simple as, you know, we're not going to go to public hearing next time, it's just to review that, and so if you don't like it when I bring it, then it's as simple as striking it, shifting those around. And I maybe wanted to clarify Rebecca's comment, that, you know, no matter what size lot it is, you're still required to meet all of our setback requirements, you know, you still have to meet kind of all those underlying zoning district requirements, and still, you're still insured that you're not going to have anything that's too high, you know, setback, too close to the property line, things of that nature, so.
Victoria, would you like to come up and make a comment?
Victoria Seaver, 121 North of Lake Moscow. So first time I came down here, about a year and a half or two years ago, was about ADUs, and I had been following this faithfully, and gone to all the open houses, so I'm really interested in it. Not that I'm building one, but, you know, I'm really interested. So I want to pick up on some of the things that you're talking about, and I agree with no CPU. I don't think you need it, because there's so many criteria that you've talked about on height, and percentage of lot that can be built on, and you have to leave a certain amount of the lot of space, yada, 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 that your large yachts, lots, and, or yachts, anyway, are automatically going to be taken into consideration, just as you said. And I think that when it's well-designed, you don't need that CPU. That it should be the same for everybody. So I agree with that. When you talk about parking, I'm R4. I'm, I've got lots of apartments around me, there are also homes around me, and it's just as Nels has said, we have parking problems because of all the apartments and everything, so we're very sensitive to our street parking being taken up. And so I think it is correct to have a one-space parking for an ADU, and it isn't just going to be granny, it will be a college student who's being rented to, or granny has family come over, whatever. You still need a parking spot there, and so, and you really need it with the R4s. And on the charts, there was a high percentage of wanting an elderly person here, and then a high percentage of rentals, really high for rentals, and I think a lot of people look at it as a renting opportunity. Parking comes into play again, and all those criteria, you've got, you've gone through really good criteria for setting these, setting this thing up, and if you stick to them, then I think it works, you know? And, and then all those things have, but if you start chipping out the criteria, then you're going to mess it up. So I want that, that's my opinion. And you vacillated on the parking before, and I'm going to say you need that parking space, because I think you can always get rid of it if you want to. But, and I think it should be no, no CPU, I think it's the same for everybody. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Just take some public input while we're at it.
Ken White, at 835 Harold Street in Moscow.
The mic is working. Do you?
The mic is quiet.
Can you hear me?
That's...
Okay. Just too far away. Well, I agree with Nels, we need to keep neighborhoods of a variety of type in this, in Moscow, to keep it a family-friendly town. A lot of people like myself prefer that to be a single-family residence neighborhood, and those are typically in R1 and R2. So I, for different reasons, I guess, I, I think the conditional use permit is something that I could live with, because to me, it allows the neighborhood to make the choice of whether or not they densify to that degree or not. Because under a conditional use, you do have to have a hearing and notify all of the people within so many feet and so on, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I, I do think in the single-family residence areas, it's, it's very important for the families that live there to have, you know, they don't want that much densification to happen in that neighborhood. They've got kids running in the street, they've got old folks that can just barely get out and get around town. I think it would, it would degrade over time, and I'm sure it wouldn't happen for a number of years, but over time, I could see it degrading the great family neighborhoods we have in Moscow. And so I, I could, I could live with, with R1 and R2. It would be better if it could be extended into other, you know, single-family residence neighborhoods that aren't, that are in R3, and I assume there are some in R3 and R4, maybe not. But I guess that's, I think that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I guess, oh, one more comment. Nathaniel Ely, 318 South Howard. I just wanted to add to the conversation. I'm in favor of getting rid of the CUP for all zones as well, and I would actually counter, you know, the last argument, that it's great for families maybe to have a CUP, and we've got one, and we would love to have the ability to have an ADU in any zone, we're in an R2 zone. And the, the process for a CUP is so onerous, has to almost preclude most anyone from, from getting approval through that process. So I think my chief argument would, would be to, to keep the CUP out of it, if, if you want it to be an option in all four zones, and personally, we would advocate that it be an option in all four zones. The, the data supports it being open, and the less hurdles we put in the way, I think the better for, for our town. So no other comments on, on the other criteria. I did, well, it's other than I appreciated what, what you had to say, that you do need to keep some of these things in there, just to make it work, so that we're not, you know, completely converting neighborhoods. But we're already seeing that happen naturally, I mean, there's, I think by last count, there's over seven hundred and fifty rentals that are not supposed to be rentals in this town, it's just, that's, that's, it's Moscow, you know, it's a university town, and some of those have been there for, for well over fifty years, and this isn't, this isn't really a new thing, you know? It's just allowing people to, to do it in a way that conforms to, to laws that, you know, guide it, would be what I would say. So thanks for your time, appreciate you considering it.
Thank you.
So that's kind of what I see as our big decisions, are, do we want to do a CUP for R1 and R2? We just, just had the arguments in a nutshell, right there. Kind of related to that, in terms of enforcement, I mean, the, the situation I see happening is, five years from now, somebody inherits this house, and, oh, look, there's this cool little apartment here, and they're not even going to think about it, they're going to go ahead and rent it. I mean, is there any, what's the enforcement mechanism in that situation?
Well, if they live there, they moved into it, they could certainly do that, under what we're proposing.
Right, no, but I mean, I mean...
But there'd be the deed restriction, you know, they'd have to work through that at the time.
Right, I know that all that exists, but how does it get enforced? Because...
Well, it's through the purchase of the property, is, you know, at that point. You know, banks these days would catch these, those things, and, you know, they need, they need to take care of it at that point in time, distinct, you know, extinguish it, or convert it into just other livable space that's part of the single-family dwelling.
And then I suppose the other would be, the complaint-driven. I say...
Correct.
It is this way, then I've moved out. So the bank was happy because I lived there, then I moved out, rented the house and the ADU, and... ADU, and it goes on that way until somebody starts the complaint process, correct?
Sure. Correct.
Yeah, because I agree, that's the way it should work, what you were saying, I just, you know, I just, when somebody in Seattle inherits this house...
Well, we could certainly, they're new enough, that we could certainly keep track of them, you know, at least the ones that come through our office and we permit, and we'd have record of them, you know, through our office. And so that would be another level.
So, so anyway, but that's kind of one argument about, it should be a CUP, that might help make that a little more clear, when all the neighbors know that, okay, this is one of the conditions, that it be owner-occupied, I don't know if that would help that much. And just a couple of other little comments, it looks like density was sort of the major concern from, from a lot of the people, just in terms of, you know, maximum space, how many people are living there. I think you got that covered nicely in what we've talked about. And I guess, I do go with the, yeah, you should, you should require a parking spot. Because if they are used as rentals, and you can have two people in there, there's going to be quite a few, two college students with a car, and they each have a car. So, you should at least get, get one extra parking spot out of it.
Is the ADU, is it one, one per property, or...
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, it's not like people are going to be overrun with three or four on their own?
Yeah.
Looks like Joan has a comment. Please.
Joanne Manita, 203 South Howard. I've been watching you on television, so, I ran down to have my piece. Because I do think we need a conditional use permit in R1 and R2. I'm seconding what this gentleman said, because we are already borderline over-dense, I think, in our historic district. And if you want to start, if you think it's an advantage to be more dense, I'm not sure why, but I think the neighborhood character has to be taken into account. I also want to second what Virginia said about having off-street parking a necessity, because also, in the historic district, we're over-parked. I don't know why, everybody who has a house has four cars, but they do, and there's no off-street parking. And so, allowing more dwelling units to be added without parking would be a big mistake. And I also wanted to say, you assume that by allowing, by following the guidelines currently in place for setbacks, et cetera, that everybody will be in a satisfactory condition. But, we just had a situation where we discovered our neighbors can build a shed or garage on the prop, on their property line. So, that means they can also build an ADU on the property line, is that correct?
Well, they can build accessory structures, 200 square feet or less, right up to the property line. But, anything over that is going to be a five-foot setback, basically.
Which is, which really isn't that much either. So, that means people, people who really are out to want to rent, build something that they can rent, and that seems to be what you're saying, could be one of the purposes of this, would only, it would only be a five-foot setback, and that isn't really very much. So, again, it's crowding the free space that we have in the neighborhood. So, for those reasons, and it puzzles me, I have a question. If I'm in an R1 neighborhood, and that says one residential unit, then I can build an ADU and rent it out, and that's still okay, even though it's an R1 unit, is that correct?
That's what we're, that's what we're proposing right now, with accessory dwelling units. So, it's accessory to the single-family dwelling unit, is basically what it is.
Right. So, it's, it seems to me it's undermining the idea, I bought a house in a, in a single-family residential unit, because I'd want to be in a single-family residential neighborhood, but now my neighbors can build accessory units and rent them out. So, it's no longer, strictly speaking, single-family units, it's become R2, in essence, permitted. So, that's what I want to say. And definitely conditional use, definitely off-street parking, and I think you need more setback than, you need to have a way of controlling the open space, and you could do that perhaps through conditional use.
Thank you.
And I guess I could clarify the setback. So, you're only able to utilize a five-foot setback when you have a 10-foot building wall. And so, whatever the underlying zoning district, whatever that overall height is, you can go all the way up to. But if you're going to set it five feet back from the rear property line, you basically have to limit the building wall to 10 feet in height, and then, you know, then your pitch of your roof can go all the way up to the underlying zone. We talked about increasing that building wall to 14 feet to accommodate for maybe a space, a loft above a garage for an ADU, so.
And that would then involve a deeper setback, if you, if you went above the 10 feet?
Uh, that was just basically for ADUs, but we weren't proposing a, a larger setback, no, five feet. I mean, you could build a house five feet away from a property line. Usually, your setbacks are five feet on the side, and then 10 on the other, or seven and a half and seven and a half, however that equates. So, yeah, I mean, you could, R4, 40 feet of building height, you could have something five feet up from the property line, that's 40 feet tall. R3 is 35 feet. R2 and R1 are both 30 feet as well. So, technically, you could have a house five feet from the property line that's 30 feet tall. And there's no restriction on how tall the building wall is. That's only for accessory structures. So, we do limit the scale and size of those pretty substantially.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, I think the sense that I heard was, we do want to move towards a draft ordinance to review on January 14, and that the group seemed to be leaning towards permitted by right in all four zones, Mike, but I think that there's still some room for some horse-trading, and so, the way you described it, it would be easy to move back and forth, so.
Correct. I've moved into Waffle on that.
Okay, we've got one in the Waffle zone now, okay. And I think I've heard, though I'm not personally sure, I'm committed to, those four important elements being included. Anyway, so I think, is that enough direction for you to prepare for January?
Certainly.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and as long as the rest of the commission's fine with "by right" right now, we can always change it, or recommend change next, next meeting.
Yep.
Does anyone else think it's strange to think about two people in 600 square feet? Besides me? And why would we want to have more than one person in something that small? Or am I thinking, or is my thinking crazy?
Well, the guesthouse that I own, two people in there, 600 square feet, it's not uncomfortable.
They don't live there, though.
They better be good friends.
Yeah. So, what, what are you, are you suggesting that, that the occupancy must be not down to one?
I'm suggesting that's worth having a conversation about.
I mean, that doesn't say that...
The purpose of a, of a, of a mother-in-law space, or grandma's space, or college student that's kind of outgrown the house space, those were all the kinds of specifics we talked about before. And the two occupants make me think it's more like, what's worrying people who live in R1, is that it's just begun to become a rental unit, and it will be as full as it can be with the two occupants, does that mean? As opposed to really and truly being this accessory thing to make, you know, family life better, help, help out. But maybe I'm remembering wrong, that's how, I had thought we got to the whole thing to begin with, was, because there is this need in modern culture to try and find a way to take care of other people and our families, or keep our kids close when they need to be close, but need some space. And so, all of a sudden, the two occupants didn't sound quite right to me. So, who's the second occupant that, that needs to be in that really tiny space?
Well, it could be a girlfriend, girlfriend or boyfriend.
Hard to have, yeah. I'd say a couple. I think, uh, 600 square feet, to have two bedrooms is really tight. I mean, you'd have minuscule bedrooms. Usually, you have 800 feet for two bedrooms, so it'd be one bedroom or studio in that amount of space, I would, you know.
Well, I, I kind of agree with Deb, that that, if you did limit it to one, that would have the biggest impact on people, building them just as a quick rental. I mean, it would cut, well, it would cut the desire to do that in half, because...
But I think it just runs in the face of reality. I, I can just tell you from experience, I have a basement apartment, it's about 550 square feet. We typically don't like to have, we think it's a little too small for couples. We've had couples there, eh, maybe five years out of the 30 that we've been in the house. But, it's hard to tell somebody, somebody moves in, young lady moves into the apartment, she gets a boyfriend, next, or girlfriend, exactly, and they move in together. That's, that's life. And then you really don't want to just start getting angry the next minute, because somebody had a friend, or somebody that's special to them before they decide they're going to go out and buy a place, or get a bigger, whatever. So, I think it'll, I think it'll be self-regulatory. I don't think saying two just signals that, but if you say one, then you really know that you're not going to enforce this, you're going to be, it'll be, the law will be broken week after week. You know, it'll just happen that way. And, and so as we've tried to enforce our own lives, we, we've found mostly that couples would prefer more than 600. Though I have to tell you that my wife and I lived in a 250-square-foot loft space in New York City for, while I was going to grad school, so it can be done.
Well, I did it with a baby, too, so...
Okay, so, anyway, I don't think it's a big, I don't think it's a big issue.
Well, I think the other thing we haven't really talked about is whether it makes economic sense for somebody to develop a rental property that's going to cost them $60,000 or more to rent it out, anyway. I think it's going to be more, you know, that's really minimal. I mean, I think it's going to cost most people more than $60,000. That's only $100 a square foot for a 600-square-foot rental property, you know, and, and with the rents you can get in Moscow, it doesn't pencil out, it really doesn't. People are going to be doing it because they need the accessory dwelling for some way, I mean, that's, that's what I think is going to happen. I think it's going to cost more like $100,000 to build an accessory dwelling, and, and at $400 to $600 a month for a, for a one-bedroom apartment...
It never pays off, so...
You know, in my lifetime, it won't pay off. Why would you do that, unless you needed it? That's what I, you know...
So, what I like to do is call time on the discussion that we will have, though, recognizing that you won't be here, so thank you for wedging that next point in. And ask you to bring us an ordinance for review that strike, that contains those elements, and I expect we will hear more of this conversation again.
Sure.
All right, and then to move on to number eight, review of light manufacturing research.
So, this is just picking up where we left off last time on light manufacturing. We had gone over kind of the two definitions of what is light and heavy. And light currently is manufacturing, compounding, treatment, processing, assembling, packaging, or testing of goods or equipment. Pretty much encompasses a lot of uses that are currently being conducted within, you know, commercial buildings. Heavy manufacturing, predominantly just allowed within the industrial zoning district. That's defined as the extraction, processing, or treatment of raw materials, or the manufacturing, compounding, treatment, processing, assembling, packaging, testing, handling, or storage of explosive or radioactive materials or products. Looking at where light manufacturing is allowed, we have it permitted by right within RTO, that's Altoris Technology Park currently. Motor business, you have to go through a special use permit, which is the equivalent of a conditional use permit, same criteria. Urban mixed commercial, we have it in there as a CUP, and then it's permitted by right within the industrial zone. So, over the last 10 years, we've processed numerous special use permits for light manufacturing uses. And really, what it comes down to is, a lot of these uses, like welding, building raft frames and throw ropes, that's Northwest River Supply, Bike Tronics, which fabricates aftermarket Harley-Davidson electronics, like stereos and, and custom dial gauges and, and speedometers and things of that nature. You really can't tell are happening on the inside of, of buildings. Fabrication of parts, tools, and archery, we have a woodworking shop, this was a special use permit, this is up by North of Frontier Property, off of West Morton Street, behind North Almond Business Park. We also had another company within that same area, that all they do is basically package gift-seed-themed garden products. And basically, it's just little metal contain, tin containers, and all they're doing is taking the, the seeds and basically putting them in the tin cans, you may have seen the company, they do a lot of sales online. And so, really, just wondering currently why you have to go through a special use permit, mainly within the motor business zone. Oftentimes, is the case that when the Board of Adjustment reviews these things, they're, you know, motor business, all the uses are required to be conducted solely indoors, except for outdoor sales, displays, used car lots, you know, has a list of, of uses that are allowed outdoors. Light manufacturing uses aren't one of them. And so, when you get to the special use permit, public hearing stage, and the Board of Adjustment's reviewing the seven criteria, and, and trying to mitigate really the common nuisances, noise, dust, vibrations, glare, some of those issues, there's really nothing to mitigate, because they're conducted entirely within closed buildings. And what ends up happening is, they're basically just reviewing parking lot, you know, access, which is all something staff does administratively. When we have a new, basically, building permit submitted through our office, we'll make sure all of those things are handled. And so, issue with these is, they've all been approved, really no conditions on them, and it's just kind of a question of why we continually have them listed as special use permits, and continually take them to the Board of Adjustment, if there's really no impact on adjacent properties in the area. And so, we did a little bit of research, had looked at Pullman, Lewiston, Post Falls, Boise, Coeur d'Alene, Spokane, what they, how they handled their industrial, light industrial and heavy industrial areas. And about half of them had two zones, they had light industrial and heavy industrial. And those were predominantly the larger areas, probably with the exception of Pullman, which is usually with Schweitzer Engineering, I think they had, you know, divided up, and they, they're large enough with their manufacturing and industrial uses, they, they could maybe have two zones and get away with it. Others just had one zone, industrial zone, and that's what we have right now. Most of the others allowed light manufacturing within some of their other motor business-type zones, and some of the zones that were on the outskirts of town, and they allowed that by right within those. And then you had a conditional use permit within areas that were closer to commercial centers, like maybe the equivalent of our general business, but not necessarily within, like, our equivalent of our central business, they didn't have them, usually in the downtown core. What we did notice was, within those light manufacturing definitions, they had some nuisance language included within the definition of light manufacturing. And so, when we looked at Post Falls, kind of a, maybe the best example, they say that industrial uses which have less detrimental effect upon surrounding property... industrial uses which have less detrimental effect upon surrounding properties by reduction or elimination of nuisances such as smoke, noise, vibration, dust, glare, air pollution or water pollution. They also have less demand upon public services such as electricity, gas, sewers, and streets. Another good example is Coeur d'Alene, and they say that light manufacturing means activities that include manufacturing, compounding, processing, assembling, packaging, treatment, fabrication, which is similar to our definition, at least the start of it, of articles or merchandise that is primarily indoors with an onsite operation that will be, will not be significantly detrimental to the environment in respect to air, water, noise, and visual quality. And so, you know, basically after reviewing what those other communities have done and how they address them, there seem to be a couple simple maybe fixes to our current ordinance in respects to light manufacturing. I think maybe the most obvious one is we can retain current light manufacturing language that talks about that manufacturing, compounding, treatment, processing, assembling, packaging, or testing of goods or equipment, but include some language at the end that states that it is primarily indoors and which does not present any adverse effect upon surrounding properties from smoke, noise, vibration, dust, glare, air pollution, and water pollution. So still gives us some teeth within the definition that if we have a use that is creating a nuisance to surrounding uses, we can work with that operator in order to maybe mitigate some of those, some of those aspects. And then also, within motor business zone, you know, permit those by right. General business would maybe be through a conditional use permit just because of the proximity to downtown as well as adjacent residential neighborhoods. I guess the kind of common light manufacturing uses that you run into these days are, you know, good examples, North Almond Business Park, breweries, you know, if they have some type of retail component, then generally, they're allowed by right. We just say they're more of a retail use and the, you know, however they're producing is just incidental to that retail use. Nils Peterson that produces, or is a baker up there, you know, has a retail component. Those are all kind of the startup light manufacturing uses that we're seeing that really have no effect on adjacent properties and, which really, you know, there's no reason to be reviewing those through a conditional use permit or a special use permit. So that would be our recommendation as far as light manufacturing. So just looking for some direction. I could certainly, along with the draft ADU amendment, change those aspects of the code and bring a draft amendment to the next Plan and Zoning Commission meeting if you'd like.
Okay. Kurt? Okay, so we, yeah, we have the central business zone, right? And that's just the downtown essentially?
Yeah, just central business is predominantly downtown, correct.
And so general business kind of, does that generally surround the downtown?
Yeah, it's predominantly Gritman Medical Center is within general business. And then we have, we do have some pockets of general business. I think nineteen twelve Center may be general business. Presbyterian Church, Leito County Courthouse is general business. And then we recently rezoned the parking lot that's across Van Buren, I believe, that's also associated with the courthouse. They had rezoned all of those around two thousand five, two thousand six. So those are also general business. But other than that, we don't have a whole lot of other general business in town. So there is some kind of closer proximity to those residential neighborhoods as well as downtown with, you know, the Gritman vicinity.
I have a couple of, maybe they're tangential, but one is just a question to understand what the status of the industrial park is. Because this is more important if the industrial park is not happening perhaps. If the industrial park is happening, maybe there's a path for these sorts of things to happen there.
Well, with the closing of the Urban Renewal District or the expiration of the Urban Renewal District at Altoras, it's likely that a new Urban Renewal District will be created in the southeast Moscow Industrial Park. And so we'll be moving forward with that, the creation of that probably in the next couple of years as well. We already have the plan from WH Pacific on that as well as the remapping of the floodplain by Terographics. And so over the next couple of years, we're gonna move towards bringing that to fruition.
Okay. Thanks. The other thing, as I was thinking about this, I was reminded of time I spent in Eugene, Oregon, kind of near the U of O campus. And I believe it was Wonderbread had a bakery. And you pointed out Panhandle Bakery, which we're imagining is light manufacturing and on a nice, small scale. This Wonderbread operation was a city block. And it had, like you see at the courthouse, it had a big parking lot where semis were backing up to loading docks. And the building was windowless, big concrete block box. And so what I wonder is, it's easy to feel good about light manufacturing when I think it's something that's fairly small. But are we opening ourselves up to the potential of a much larger operation? And does that impact the character of the community?
Well, we're mainly talking about motor business. And so you think about motor business, that could include St. John's Hardware with all the implement equipment out in the parking lot and all the repair that's going in. It could mean Moscow Building Supply, which has a large outdoor, you know, building supply yard with forklifts going constantly. You know, I think you think about some of the uses that are currently within the motor business zone that have a lot more of an impact than some large warehouse use could have. And so I don't think you have any issue with any detriment to the community by allowing some of these light manufacturing uses.
Even if they happen to become large?
Even if they happen to become large. I mean, it's gonna be in motor business, which already has large parcels of land, you know, car dealerships, malls are all in motor business, mainly the commercial corridors. So it's already intended that they're large pieces of property that are mainly automobile oriented. So you're gonna have large semis and cars and a lot of activity. And so that would just be incidental to any other type of motor business activity that occurs right now. So.
Okay. Thanks.
So maybe when you get into the general business zone, a square footage limit would make more sense.
Yeah, that'd be where the CUP comes in. You know, maybe we don't want a thirty thousand square foot facility right there on Main Street. And so, yeah, they could certainly limit that through a conditional use permit review. So.
I could go back to what Wendy was saying about the economics of the ADU, the economics of spending that kind of money on Third Street or on Sixth Street or to try and do a bakery of the size your second. I don't, I don't think somebody would do that. It's not very cost-effective to pick up the priciest ground in town to, to put that kind of operation. So that just might preclude it already.
And that's what we were concerned about in the beginning, that maybe these light manufacturing uses were gonna be taking up commercial, prime commercial frontage. But I think the market's just gonna dictate that with, you know, just what you just said, with the price of land and the price of location. I think they're naturally gonna locate on kind of the, maybe the outer edges or other areas of the community.
Or does it make sense to bring in some, you know, when we talked about allowing residential and commercial zones a few weeks ago with our ordinance that kind of worked with, where the primary, the residents had to be either above or behind, in a sense, you still retain that commercial presence by doing that. And I don't know how that connects with this, but somehow having that, the general sort of appearance of that zone being commercial with manufacturing having, not being right up on the street or right up in the setback zone. If they have to have some kind of office component or, I don't know, do you know what I'm talking about? Maybe not.
I do, yeah. I mean...
I'm just asking a question really. Would it make sense to, to explore that?
I think that the commercial frontages that we'd wanna be preserving would be in areas that light manufacturing uses probably wouldn't be going.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So is it your sense that you would like, Mike, to bring us a draft revision, draft amendment for addressing light manufacturing to our January meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So I think what you've outlined, and bring it on.
Okay.
Okay. Next is the shared readings discussion. I'm sitting here thinking, what are the three articles that we had? One was on historic theaters. One was on small-scale downtown. And I'm drawing a blank on what the third article was that was included this month. But open the floor to thoughts that you had about what you saw in those articles. Looks like, Nels, you have it all printed off there.
Well, we've been talking about the older, smaller, better has come up earlier today in a conference that we're gonna be having here next September in Moscow. And I, this falls right into my plate. I can't agree more with the kinds of things that this group, you know, talk about. Even though I love to see restaurants in other places, one of the things that we know is that restaurants don't make a lot of money. And they need to be, that's why restaurants are typically in old places, because you need to have paid the mortgage down to make a restaurant go. And so older, smaller, better really is, it's wonderful. Unfortunately, modern world is bigger, bigger, bigger. That's what we've tended to do. That's what we're, we're all about. We're getting fatter and taller, and our buildings are getting bigger. And I don't know whether, in our own case, I agree with this, but we don't have a lot of stuff built in Moscow. We don't have an overabundance of, of stuff, if you know what I mean. I think we've used up, you know, when you go to bigger cities that have some miles of old buildings that aren't being used, you can really see exciting possibilities for them. But it just seems like we don't have too much of it. And I agree, I couldn't agree more. I think our downtown is older, smaller, better. I think that's why it's, and in case people haven't noticed, we're all of a sudden getting some really cool shops downtown. I mean, there's that shop, the glass art place. I mean, that's high-end. That's Portland stuff. There's this little place down here where you can get all, every kind of olive oil in the world. Wow. So I think Main Street is flourishing, and I think it's living this dream right here.
Mm-hmm.
And the question is, if we do Legacy Crossing as the years go by, how can modern stuff be like older, better, smaller?
Right. That was the question that I had, was looking at what your students have done in Legacy Crossing, they didn't get that message.
Well, they, that's hard.
I agree. And it's financially hard. Because how would you build it up in those little pieces as opposed to a developer coming in and putting a big idea down?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think the historic theater one kind of fit right into the same theme, that having cultural pieces, old theater downtown, drives activities, much as I think you were suggesting restaurants drive activity.
I don't know. I don't know how many of you are going to it, but we now have, every third Saturday, we have live broadcast opera at the Kenworthy. It is fabulous. And, you know, I understand that opera's over most of our heads, but I'm trying, even in my old age, to pay attention to it. And, you know, we saw, it's wonderful. In case you haven't gone to it, and these are hundred-dollar seats, and you get to go, right, because of the new equipment that has been brought to the Kenworthy. So what you can do is take this old theater and bring new equipment. And now we've got this digital equipment. And it's thanks to the opera people. Actually, it's, it's a bunch of Pullman people who really paid for the new equipment in the Kenworthy to make this possible for us to have this live broadcast from the Met right there in our hands. The Marriage of Figaro, boom, ba, boom. And so anyway, what I guess I'm thrilled with is that on Saturday morning, while the market is going on, there's a hundred people in the Kenworthy Theater paying twenty dollars a seat to watch opera. I just find that astounding. I wanna let people know that that's going on. And John, it's okay with me, John, if you want, I'll, I'll buy your first ticket to The Marriage of Figaro.
Take the opera challenge, John.
All right. Other, thank you for that nice promotional piece on the ad. Other comments on our readings?
Well, one, one point that came out in one of the three, I don't remember which, it was maybe hidden in there a little bit, was working with historic buildings and giving more, affording more leniency in terms of developing them for mixed-use purposes than you could meet with new construction standards, because the cost of retrofitting and making older buildings work and come up to those standards is, puts it out of most people's ballpark to be able, and I can say this from personal experience with one building we own downtown, that, you know, our abilities to work with that building are limited by having to meet standards that are hard to meet if you wanna have mixed use. So, you know, I'm a preservationist all the way, but it's, it's hard without the support to do that. You know, it's, so, just...
So that's the challenge of the vision.
It's one of the challenges, yeah.
Okay.
I'd think kind of along the lines, the light manufacturing conversation too, that, you know, this, this might not necessarily be limited to restaurants and things like that. If, I think that over the next twenty or thirty years, with 3D printing, things like that, we're actually gonna come back a lot closer to running down to the blacksmith's shop and having him, you know, beat something out that you need today, only on a much more high-tech locally manufactured level.
But moved into 3D, but right downtown.
Yep, yep. And, and I think, I think that's why it's a really good idea to get rid of the SUPs and the, and that on this sort of thing. You know, every, every barrier we can get out of the way to help that happen is better.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay. Before we adjourn, next month, a reminder that we will have election for officers at our first meeting. Wendy has indicated she won't be here for that. So you may wanna give some thought to that. I'm happy to serve as chair, but you may have some other ideas as well. So we will do that. And then on the twenty-eighth, which we don't have any tentative items here yet, I expect to be out of town and you expect to be out of town.
So who's?
So, and then I think right now Joel is third in line, is he not?
I'll be out of town.
Anyway, maybe we'll add a quorum. But the other is the issue of having, rarely has it mattered, but having the depth of three seats to be the chair could be important on that meeting. Anyway, so any other, any other thoughts for the good of the order? Thank you so much. And I'll take a cookie now.